To reply, the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and free and just as one.
On page six, the first line of discussion, this is Tori Shear, GAV meeting and green. Congratulations. Got to change the green to.
It's Cosmos. Gotcha, thank you.
That's the only other thing.
And then, under staffing, we wanted to move the appointment of Gabrielle, the benefits, up to the top, just based on Rachel's comments. All those in favor of the agenda change?
Thank you.
Any announcements or recommendations? Next up is citizen comments. This is time for citizens to comment. Or address the board, we may not respond, but this is a time for the, for citizens to interact with the board. If you're at home following along, if you use the raise the hand icon feature on your screen, it looks like the hand or if you're in person, then raise your hand. I will gladly call on you for their any citizen comments. And then, we'll move on, next we have our consent agenda. So we have the minutes of our regular executive session, the open meetings on March 17th, and special meetings of March 24th and 26th, as well as the financial. Is there a motion to accept this consent agenda? Just made a motion, is there a second? Just seconded. Any further discussion around the consent agenda?
I'll do that minute change in that section.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, next up, we have staffing. So we had said we were gonna move the appointment of Gabrielle, the benefit, for kindergarten teacher at Elm Mill School to the top. Here's Rachel.
Hi, thank you for being willing to accommodate my schedule, I have to be at the Upper Valley this evening. So Gabby is a well-trained, highly skilled early childhood educator, who comes to us with six years of lead teacher experience. She is licensed in both New York and Rhode Island. She's new in the community, so she is already working on that reciprocity for her license. She is well-versed play-based learning, exceptional populations, and an absolute delight to be around. We're very excited to bring her into the classroom. She is familiar with several of the programs that we're already using, so we know that she's gonna be able to jump in and get right to work.
Thank you very much. Mr. and Mrs. Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
Just seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Stay in?
Yes.
Okay, then we're gonna jump back up to the top for retirements. So first, we have Catherine Goslin, reading specialist at Union Street School. Sorry, I can't hear. I'll try and speak up, I'm sorry. I'll try and speak up, I'm sorry. Good. Alright, so first up for retirements, we have Catherine Goslin, reading specialist at Union Street School. I think it's here to speak for Mrs. Goslin.
Oh, I think it was. Oh, it's not there.
Cindy.
I'll jump in, since I filled in at Union Street for a year and I got the pleasure of working with Kathy. An amazing educator, has been an asset to the district, has worked with so many children over the years, and she is going to be greatly missed. So I, you know, professionally and personally, wish her all the best, and want to thank her for her years of service to the district.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Mrs. Goslin. I've worked with her when I had students, we were at Union Street School, and she was great. And in just one item, Mrs. Goslin asked about exit interviews in her resignation letter. I've spoken with Peter already about trying to put something in place for that at the end of the year. I'm not even taking a consideration, so.
We've already started that process. Yeah.
Thank you.
We have the Google document that HR is going to send out to anybody who is leading the district, and if they want to have a person, personal interview with Josh, he's very willing to sit with them for that information, so that's gonna happen.
All those in favor of accepting this petition?
Aye.
Aye. And next up, we have Diane Daniels, school nurse at Springfield High School.
Sorry, I'm up again. So also, had the pleasure of working with Diane for many years, and yeah, it's, it's just, these are always hard, because you're always like happy for the person, but you're also sad, because you're losing such a huge, you know, asset to your building and to the district. So I just wanna thank Diane for everything. She has, you know, been through a lot in our building, and has always been steadfast, and always on the, you know, right there when we need her. And she knows so much also about families and just, you know, the history of the district, so it's going to be hard to replace her. So I do wish her all the best, and I want to thank her for her years of service, for obviously my building, but also the district as well. So best wishes to her.
Thank you. Martha?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just wanted to chime in too on Diane, because I've worked with her for a number of years, being in the district, not just the school nurse, but she's helped a lot with nutrition committee, and during the summer programs and other things beyond just the school nursing. And she will be very missed, hard to fill those shoes, but we wish her the best moving forward on a district level.
Thank you, Martha.
I wanna wish her well. I worked with her when I was at the tech center, because the high school nurses dealt with the tech center, and she will be, she will be missed.
Is there a motion to accept Mrs. Daniels' retirement? Steve, is there a motion, is there a second? Seconded, any further discussion? Thank you for all your years of service to the district, all those in favor? Okay, now, we're through retirements, we're onto resignations, so we have Kylan Dunn, K5, classroom teacher at Union Street School. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Kylan Dunn? Just made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, we have appointments. So first, we have on that list, Peter Burrows, FY '25 interim superintendent. So we, I've, we need a licensed superintendent currently for the district. Peter has graciously offered to be that licensed superintendent for the district from now through the end of the school year, which would be June 30th. He is also working on a transition plan in his current district. He thinks that he may be able to join us as early as May, but he's working to finalize that timing. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Peter Burrows as the interim superintendent for the district, which means he can sign off on certain grant forms and other documentation.
So much.
Just made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion around that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Takes way off your shoulders. Okay, next up, we have Eric Rose, assistant principal, one year, for Springfield High School.
Yes, so I think the high school has several, so I was just gonna combine all of them, if that's okay, and just speak, you know, that we have some great, we had some great candidates this year, and it was great interviewing all of them. And I think we have a solid group of individuals coming to the high school. So Eric is one of them. We also have Karen Henry, and we also have Richard, and I don't want to try to slaughter his last name, I'm still learning how to say that. So we are excited for all of them to be joining our building and the district.
Great. Is there a motion to appoint Eric Ripsford, one year, Karen? You made the motion, is there a second? Just seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next to their appointments, we have Lindsay Perkins, principal for Union Street School.
I guess I'll speak, guys. I wasn't expecting to or planning to, but we had an exhaustive search, had a number of applicants, and Lindsay quickly rose to the top and was recommended by all, and look forward to having her as part of the team.
Thanks, Rachel. There a motion to appoint Lindsay Perkins as the principal for Union Street School? Steven, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion?
I would just like to thank the committee and the feedback that was received throughout the process. It's nice to have the community participate and to receive feedback from community members, so. Say thank you.
And the board had a chance to meet with both finalists who position it's, along in the same recommendation, so welcome back to the district, Ms. Perkins. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Richard Campanera, for English teacher at Springfield High School. And he already spoke about it. Sorry.
Every single person joining us, though.
Yep. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Perkins? Just made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so we have Karen Henry, social studies teacher for Springfield High School. And we also recommend that her, is there a motion to appoint Ms. Henry for a social studies teacher? Steven, is there a second? Just seconded, any further discussion?
I just wanted to welcome her, my grandson, Hatteras, a history teacher last year. I think it's gonna be an asset.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then finally, under appointments, we have Megan Gazelhard, school counselor for Union Street School.
Paul.
Yeah, I'm on to speak for Megan. So we're super excited to be welcoming Megan onto the team. Megan worked at Riverside Middle School for six years, where she was an extremely successful math teacher. She has since been a special educator, working at the Wilder School, where she has gained considerable experience at trauma-informed instruction, along with various de-escalation and self-regulation techniques. She is in the process of gaining her master's in school guidance counseling, and we know that she'll be an important part of Union Street moving forward.
Great, thanks, Paul. Is there a motion to appoint, is there a, you made the motion, is there a second? Just seconded, any further discussion? Welcome back to the district, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, under other business, we have approved copier lease.
Now, swing your packet. Our, we are joining a multi-state, multi-district consortium buying group to lease copiers, largely in Vermont, some in Hampshire, some in Maine, I think there's one district in Florida. So we got some significant buying power, other being part of that large group. And we're gonna save, you know, some significant money, which we'll talk about tomorrow, and how that's affecting next year's budget. But this is recommended that we go with SimQuest, who is the low bidder. Do you have any answering questions you may ask?
Just for 30, it's about a $30,000 savings for both of you.
Is this the first?
And we're actually, we're actually getting two additional machines, so we're getting more machines for less money.
Is this the first year that we've worked with a buying group like that, or leasing group like that?
For copiers, yes, but we are part of other groups for other things.
Yep, I've seen those come across.
So, since you asked. I've been sniffing around this group for three or four years. You know, somewhat reluctant, not totally understanding what they were doing and how they were doing it. But three or four of my counterparts got in the last couple of years, who I have great respect for, so I quiz them and ask them what their experience was. I've got nothing but positive reports. Greatest in the industry, so I figured it was time for us to join.
Thank you. And SimQuest, like, used them at my office, and they have been amazingly helpful and expedient in their response to us when things go bad, so. They're a little bit bitter, but they're amazing.
Yeah, I've never personally worked with SimQuest before. I, I've gotten good recommendations from them.
Yeah, nothing but good from them.
Is there a motion to approve the copier license?
So what?
You made the motion, is there a second? Just seconded, any further discussion around that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so our next regular meeting would be April 21st, and then May 5th. We also have a special budget meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, April 8th, here at the library at 6:00 PM. That concludes the main portion of our agenda for this meeting.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It appears that I somehow missed the citizen comment section of the agenda. I am a citizen, and I'd like to make a comment, if you can squeeze me in.
Yeah, sure. You have to take the citizen's. Yeah, you're just a downstairs.
Thank you. My name is Steve Yeller, I live on Summer Street in Springfield. It's come to my attention, as it has to many people, that the Federal Department of Education has sent a communication regarding certification of all school districts assurance that they are complying with Section 6, Title 6, usually of the federal law. And knowing the intention of the, of the current federal administration, I'm wondering, I guess I have a question first, and then a comment based on what the answer is to that question. How is the Springfield School District intending to reply to that request for certification of its compliance with, with Title 6? And specifically, is there any understanding or expectation that any of the programs and initiatives that are currently underway in the Springfield School District would be negatively affected? And/or would you anticipate that any federal funding would be withheld based on the response that we in Vermont, and particularly my concern about Springfield, in the way that you would respond to that federal requirement? Is the question, is the question clear?
Yes, the question is clear. I'm aware of the letter asking us to sign up for Title 6. We are checking with our district attorney to see what our, what our obligated response to that would be. We're also waiting for guidance from the SBA to come out. I think we received a communication today from them for that. Just prior to this meeting, I had not had the chance to read that yet. Also, Peter Burrows, who's we just appointed as our interim superintendent, just sent an email to me, I think right prior to the meeting, that Massachusetts has been given, or sent out a memorandum to their school saying that everybody's been given an additional 10 days to respond, which will allow us some time to do some research.
We're getting a small, short turnaround time.
Yeah, so we need that additional time to do some research and, and most of the brief response.
Okay, well, then, given that it's not yet, so the response is not yet finalized and determined, I want to just add my voice to those who feel that it's really important for Springfield and for all the school districts in Vermont, right near across the nation, not to be intimidated by the efforts of the Trump administration to gut any programs that focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I know we can't use that term, those are not dirty words, but, but Title 6 really refers to a commitment and a certification of not discriminating in any way against any student based on race and other, you know, area of all kinds of characteristics. And I want to just make sure that I get my voice heard, that we shouldn't be bowing to any pressure from the Federal Department of Education to harm any programs that we currently have, that we feel meet the letter of the law of Title 6. And, and whatever efforts the Trump administration makes to try to get rid of the reality of who we are and diversity that all of us represent, that we are gonna stand with other states who have already said, you know, federal funding or no federal funding, we're gonna do what we feel is right. I want to, and I want to say, I hope Springfield and all of Vermont will do the same.
No, thank you. I would just say that we all know we're stronger together, so my hope would be that the response comes from the state of Vermont, and not just from individual school districts within the state. So I would encourage you to reach out to your state representatives and talk to them about it, because I believe it should come from the state as a whole.
Right, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity, though.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, with that being said, we would close the normal business of our meeting. We would be then moving into the SBA Board Training rules and responsibility, but that these things are still, yeah. So if you don't want to hang out for a two-hour training session with us, we understand. Welcome to leave, and we will keep the meeting open and move into that training session. Welcome to hang out, I do plan on recording it, so it'll be available later if you want to come back.
For the board, if they'd like to take a stretch break, go ahead, it'll take 15 minutes to set up.
So we take the five-minute break.
So you need, you need us for any?
No, I only have work, that's all.
I think Drake should stay, I think it'd be good education for him.
There's a student rep as part of the portion.
Student rep is the boy.
If you want me, I'll stay.
No, you're, you're.
Are you a student rep?
I'm not a student rep.
So we invited you to the meeting, you can join with us, and then share if you're there.
Okay. So you're the student rep? Well, she said something about a student rep, so then I thought that must be her. Let's see, is there a tablet just close by?
That, you have to pull that big thing down?
Okay. I don't know if my laptop will make it the whole two hours productive.
I understand.
Oh, thank you so much. Oh my gosh, I'll be interested. I gotta pull it.
Yeah.
The guys are gonna, no. Is that the, just the, that's my card right there, it was for you.
Of course. And that's fine. Oh, and now I need connection to Wi-Fi. How would you know?
We can't afford Wi-Fi here.
There should be in the after hours.
After hours. Our student rep could.
Yeah, oh yeah, there it is, so it's unlocked. Yes. Oh, and then here's the email from a colleague that came in after I left my house.
You just got, you needed to unmute so you don't feel it's either.
I need to mute myself.
That was a good response.
Oh, I thought. I thought that was the mute. Perfect. You guys use Google Meet, not many boards use Google Meet, they usually use Zoom. It makes sense, because the whole school district is usable, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's logical.
Then we have to admit that first.
I think it lasts longer.
I didn't, I just saw the T A, I didn't see who it was that popped up.
Thanks. Okay.
So it's with somebody else too, at the intersection, I read it was over by. No, he started driving, but he's hoping to get drivers out. I think he said he gets it next, or first semester next year.
It's like one drive from the driver's office, no, it's kind of the K11, that she actually stayed back for three.
Oh, okay.
Her birthday was just recently, 2016. Because you had to be 15 and a half when the semester started in Vermont.
No, so they did it in summer.
So they did the summer one, it was beautiful. I had my birthdays in June, so I did it in summer. It was like two and a half weeks of classroom and one week of driving.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it was like an intensive, and.
Because you know, one day, there's 75 students, but only 60 slots, but other classes, they don't, it's hard.
I know with this, with that thing, straight order thing.
So it's, I think, yeah.
So I just want to share my.
40 hours or something?
This one.
Is it a half, or is it? Six-hour day, it's a thing that I've seen.
Yeah, so it's hard time during.
Is it not, is it during the school day, or is it after?
Oh, currently it's during.
And driving is kind of a challenge.
Yeah.
So.
It's, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the water. That noise.
Just took a minute.
But I didn't hear the name.
Is there a way to make that other part a little bit smaller on the right there? Because I'm. What I'm showing is my full screen.
Yeah, he's trying to get somebody.
So while he's doing that, let me grab some.
I think if you click the little person button, it'll go. Or the X, just X out of it up top. Yeah.
It's really hard to sit at that angle.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because I'm on. Let me see what I shared. Is that now? Then the entire screen's not to the window.
Are we doing a?
Or we can just kill the. We don't have to look at the meeting. SAP is still recording, so.
Yeah, shares.
Is, is there anybody on there that has to be on there?
Just SAP, but you don't need to be linked into the meeting, right?
We're live on.
Oh, you are live?
Yeah.
You can all move closer.
Do you want the presentation bigger?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm in presentation.
If you should. Slideshow, like on the left from the right slide, and it'll make it. You see the magnifying glass button bottom? No, no, move that.
I'm gonna stop presenting. That was me, that was me, Troy, hang on.
You're gonna do?
Yeah, let us do the left or what? So in your upper left, enter the slideshow.
Yeah, I tried that, it just does that.
Is that better? Right there?
Yeah, it's a little better.
Okay.
And if I change slides, it's not changing with me.
That was so weird. So go. Do you need to see everything, or can you just see your slides?
You could send the slideshow to me and I can.
Oh, it's under your computer.
Oh, wait, it just changed.
Oh, it just changed. That was better.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really.
No, I don't.
But I went from.
Okay. It's not changing it. It's not changing the.
I think it's really delayed. It's frozen.
Yeah.
All right, well, you know what I could do is I'll just.
Billy, how are they, they high tail it out of here, could we have them print it for us?
If I send it to you, let's do that. Sorry about this, there's always a technical glitch in these things. I can do that, Troy, that might be the fastest way to do it. It's off. So you guys don't have name tags. We have like six people here. Is it a six-member board or is it a five-member board?
Five with a student rep.
Five with a student rep, okay, so you have the first one.
Yes.
That's awesome. Do you mind, because it would just be so helpful if I just passed around these markers and stickies, if you could just write your first name and put it on your shirt, that way I don't have to remember your name. And also, I don't want to call you Hey You. Which is never polite, I realize. Thanks, did it come through? I don't think I'm sharing anymore. And is there any newly elected board members here, that anybody was elected at your last election? You guys are all.
I'm probably the new-ish.
You're new-ish.
Yeah, so at last, this will be my second year. I came on, I filled an open position. And last April?
Yes.
Yeah, it was last April.
So you were appointed last April and then just ran?
And then I just ran for election.
So you did not have a seat that was open for election this year?
We had two.
Two, okay.
Mine and Dee's, and we were the only ones that ran.
Okay, so you ran on a poll, okay. Okay, so that's why you have no new board members.
Yes.
All right, we'll get to that in a second.
We can make a name for you. We'll let Harper do it.
Just B and we have just A.
Oh, that's why you put your second, your last name and shot, got it. So you have the same issue I have, unable to go in presentation mode.
Do you have to hit enable editing at the top?
That's how Oak Hill sent out ever access. Long on.
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't gotten it from Union Street, only they did it from Oak Hill.
That's because the Oak Hill principal had a child on vacation and couldn't access it. And so she has been.
Additional presentation.
I told Fletcher that we got it, because I've been able to access it since forever. Yeah, you have, because you have an old brother. Did you write just B?
Is it? Just because.
Yeah, we have a time zone difference. Like, we lost our window of being able to access.
Oh.
Cleveland, we were over there.
Yeah, just zoomed in.
That's a little bit.
Try there? Slideshow.
Slideshow, yeah, try.
From the beginning?
That's good. All right, well, we'll take it, and you can move your slides, so that's good. That's good. Well, and if there's something really small, I can read it. There you go. There's more than I'm going to solve a problem with, isn't it? So Troy, if you don't mind going back to slide one. The. Perfect. I'm gonna stand up because it's been a long day, and if I sit, I'm gonna crash. Keep my energy moving, and you're welcome to stand up too, because I know you all have had long days as well. So I wanted to introduce myself and say thank you for having me come this evening. My name is Debbie Sinizer, and I'm the Director of Board Services at Vermont School Boards Association. Troy and I spoke a couple of weeks ago, maybe more than that, about me coming today to do kind of an overview or a review of roles and responsibilities of the school board. And we envision this being the first of a series of trainings for the Springfield School Board. And what I'm super excited about is hearing just now that you have an interim superintendent, Peter Burrows, who I have met on a number of occasions and think very highly of him. And so what I hope is that when I come back, we can have him join our training as well. Because many districts do, many school boards do more alongside their superintendents. And I think it just makes for a much stronger governance team when we're running together. So, so thank you for having me, and I drove through Springfield, and on my way here I was thinking, have I been to Springfield before? And then I said, oh my gosh, I have, because I drove by your cinema. And I used, I had come over here to see movies, because I'm from Rutland, and we have no movie theater. So when there's a really special movie that I really want to drive an hour and a half to see, I will come to Springfield. Isn't that awful?
There's nothing in Rutland anymore?
Nothing.
I went to Rutland to see Avatar, so there you.
Yeah, since COVID, we lost our theater during COVID, and they never opened it, they changed it into a Planet Fitness. So, yes, so we can get in shape, but we can't see movies. So, before we begin, if we could go to the next slide with our training, hi. I would love to know a little bit more about who you are. And so I put up three questions on the slide, which I think you can read. So, and also, let me hand these out, some people do better. If you're like me, like jotting ideas down on paper, so I just bring along scrap paper. And feel free to use it or not. But basically, I'd love to have you introduce yourself to me by saying your name, how long you've served on the Springfield School Board. And number two, which I always find helpful and interesting, is what do you do when you're not serving in your role as a school board director? What do you do outside of this room? And it could be a career, you know, your profession, it could be a hobby, anything, just something, because I know that you're more than just a school board member. And then, the third question, this is sometimes interesting for you to know about each other. If I were to ask you to teach the group something, anything, either something to do or something that we could learn, what would you teach us? And what would you show us, show us how to do? So maybe a couple of minutes about, about that. And don't be modest, because I know everybody has something that they could share, show us how to do. They have the big report. You missed it.
I get really impressed if you were gonna say it, to be completely honest.
Anybody want to volunteer to go first, break one?
I can do it.
Troy, will you go? Thank you.
I think this is your seventh on the board, so. I ran because my kid career in the district more than anything else. When I'm not on the board, I'm the engineering director in the site lead for a company. And we make custom optical systems for aerospace and defense. One thing I can teach, there's multiple things I can teach you, infrared imaging, I know a ton about, how to read thermal imaging. I also, when we brought our house in Springfield, it had a orchard of pear trees. We learned very quickly that there's not a lot you can do with pears except eat them. I make pear wine from them now.
No kidding? You're gonna go pulling out? I, I'm raising my hand for the pear wine, I'm not as interested in the red. That's awesome. Thank you for sharing that, that's great. All right. Steve?
I've been in the board for 10 years. I first got appointed by Jess, still, still on half a year.
You did.
What do I do when I'm not serving? I follow my wife's. I'm retired, a retired teacher, I'm a retired law enforcement officer. So my, in my life, retired teacher, so I do right behind the board. What can I teach this board? As a teacher, I can teach them a lot of things.
Way you got that still.
But the one thing that I like to teach them, which I'm not happy about is when you do a PowerPoint presentation, don't read off the PowerPoint, because we can read, right? That would be, I would teach a board if I had. So many boards, they put the PowerPoint up, and then they read off it. And that's not what PowerPoint is about. So that, that would be my, my teaching skill.
That would be a helpful thing for just what anybody who presents to know, not just school boards.
It drives me crazy.
Yeah, anywhere, yeah, I agree. Well, I agree, but will you correct me if I do that? I don't think I will.
I just, I just leave.
Call me.
I just leave.
Well, no lie. Awesome, what kind of law enforcement are you doing?
I did municipal in New York, Green Street in Chester.
In Chester, Vermont, oh wow.
So I did 20 years in New York and Street.
Thank you for sharing that, Steve. All right, two males want first.
I can go first. So Denise, I'm here, this, I'm loading in my fourth year. So, just finished my first term.
And came back for more.
Yes. When I'm not serving on the board, I'm a paralegal at a law firm downtown. I'm also a part-time photographer. I commit a substantial time to the Booster Club and assisting with athletics. And I'm a year five, only one is still in the house, and he has managed to film every moment that his siblings have left open as they departed. And if I could teach the board something, it would be how to use a manual camera.
Ooh, that would be good. Do you still use a manual camera mostly, you don't use digital?
Well, it's a, yeah, like the manual settings are the digital.
Okay, so not film, but you're using digital camera, but you're using manual settings, right? Yeah, not the smartphone, that's all.
No, when I go on vacation, I just use my phone.
Right.
It's much clearer.
It's amazing what you can do with a smartphone.
Yeah, it is, it is. Yeah.
That's great. You still have a manual camera, I imagine?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
You're telling me you get those sports pictures with the manual setting?
I go with app priority, but yeah.
Interesting. I'm trying, I can help. Be auto all the way, come up with a camera.
You're talking about photos, do you take, like, are you a portrait photographer?
I do portraits, I do weddings, I do a ton of sports, because while I'm helping with sports, I'm also photographing the sports, so.
Oh, wow.
I wear many hats when I'm in. I wear many hats when I'm here. I can serve a hot dog, but I'm not gonna cook a hot dog. I can make popcorn.
You're so busy making photographs, I can't imagine you can also be cooking.
Yeah, it's.
It's a challenge.
I cook at the games, Troy and I do, that's why I'm a customer.
Oh, I see. One of the, Jess is our Harper?
Yeah. So I, Austin, I am entering my second year. So, I said I filled in last year for an open seat and then ran again in March for a three-year term. When I am not serving in my role as a school board director, I am employed full-time at Chroma Technology in Rock and Henem, Vermont. That was also, we make optical filters. This is my fourth year there, and I am still learning the industry, like crazy. So, everything from microscope books to telescopes. I also am the treasurer of the PTA, which is in our two elementary schools, primary and elementary. And then I'm a mom of two boys, so they keep me busy as well, which means sports. In the fall and the spring, in the winter, we go snowmobiling. And then, I'm, I've recently found how much I love traveling. So, I'm going to see national parks. And so, when it comes to something I could teach the board, I have spreadsheets after spreadsheets of trips to many different parks and building those out. Listening to podcasts and books and Instagram and putting together all the little pieces of what you wanna go and see and do.
Really? So you're, you're an expert.
I would not say an expert, no, but I enjoy it, and it work, and it's a, it's a spreadsheet that works for me. If somebody else might think it's a bunch of, um, just property good, but it makes sense to me.
Does your family use it?
No.
No.
My husband's a driver and I'm a navigator, and, and it works well, it works.
You're a planning tool.
It's, there's the videos that you'll see on like Facebook and Instagram, that the husband goes and he has no idea where he's going, what time he needs to be there, any of that. And he, he does a little bit, because I tell him.
Right.
But, you know, he just goes along with my whims, which is nice, because I get to plan what I wanna do.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. All right, so if I go to, if any of us visit a national park, we're gonna have to.
So we've done, it started with our ten-year anniversary. We flew into Las Vegas, and we did Zion, Bryce Canyon, and then we drove up and did Grand Tetons and Yellowstone.
Yeah.
And then we've done Acadia and Shenandoah. And then, next week, on Friday, we head to Boston, and then we'll go down and we'll do the Florida parks. So we're gonna do dry tortugas, Everglades in this town.
White turtle.
Kind of all started because fourth graders get a national park pass in the country, all fourth graders. So we kind of were like, let's do it.
Wow. That's amazing. That's great. I love that. All right, thank you for sharing that. All right, Jessica Harper.
I can go.
Okay.
I have been on the board going into my third year of three. I ran twice, first time, there were five of us running for two seats, and five in the third. Which is fine, yes, to Denise and Mary, the one that just took her seat when she moved out of the district. But I was totally fine with that, because the two other, these two ladies were amazing when I was running. So I was very supportive of them as well. Just knew we needed some good people on the board, so it was great. But then I ran again, and I got it, so.
Were you contested that same time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So it was nice, it was a good, good time. I haven't decided as to my next term, that is still to be determined. But I have a kiddo, he's a freshman, and so when I'm not here, I coached the last few years of his soccer. I did a lot through Parks and Rec, and then his JV soccer time. I like to be outside. I have a dog, so I walk a lot with my black lab. And I have a, a new passion for being, you know, outside, just kind of detaching from life in general, that's what's going on right now. And so, I actually have a friend who does bees, and so I've learned a lot more about bees and honey. And I kinda wanna, I'm very new to it, but I wanna, you know, look into learning myself, and then I can teach the board about making, you know, like chopsticks and things like that, so with the comb. So, it's been interesting. But I've done a lot of the harvesting of the honey and, you know, all of that process, so. That would be fascinating. We don't have bees, bees are interesting.
And I just heard a story on my drive here tonight, that the bee population really took a hit over this winter. Like, bee bee battle, and they're trying to figure out why. But people who do this are living, they're pulling up their combs, and there's like many dead bees. It's just, it's really terrifying.
Friend of mine lost, they're both, the last two that they had, and they're getting new bees in the spring, so, in a couple of weeks. So hopefully, everything goes well, we can start rebuilding the population.
I hope so.
Yes.
We need those bees for some reasons, yeah, not just for the honey.
Right.
Across all nations.
Yeah.
Sure.
Exactly.
So Harvey, basically, bring us home here.
Well, I'm Harper, and I've been the school board rep since December. When I'm not here, I go to school, softball, it's real high school. I'm a three-season athlete, I'm a part of our math team. Yeah, and one thing I could teach you guys, I could teach you almost anything about soccer, basketball, traffic, I could teach you the rules for any of those three sports. That's, that's kind of all I've got, so.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
I wish I'd known you a while ago, you could've taught me more about soccer when my son was playing, because I never understood offside.
Well, a lot of things.
Almost like ten years of watching you play, and I still couldn't tell you what it is. But it sounds like you're not very busy. Maybe you're kind of slouchy.
Yeah, going through a lot.
Going through a lot. I didn't make it to tag, but I'm Debbie, so just so you remember, or you can call me, how to go meet up. So thank you guys very much. I wanted to take some time to do that, because I'm, I'm gonna see you, hopefully, after tonight as well. So it's just nice getting to know you a little bit more. And I promise we won't do that kind of thing every time I come see you. So the next slide should show just a little bit about who I am and my background. And as you can hopefully see up there, my school board experience started off overseas, actually, at an international school, when we lived in Kathmandu, Nepal. I served for one year on the school board. When my family and I moved back to Vermont, because I was raised in Vermont, I, we went back to the community where I was raised. And I ran for the school board, the Barstool Unified Union School District Board, which is a single school district, and it's in a side-by-side with Otter Valley Unified Union, Unified Union School District. And we together make up a supervisory union. So we're different from you guys, we're, we're a supervisory union. I served for a number of years and as chair as well, and I served both on the district board and the supervisory union board. And then I got off in twenty-one, and just got back on a year ago this March. So there was nobody running for a seat, and I said I might as well just do it again. So I ran as a write-in candidate, and I was elected, and then became chair again. So, and I have one more term, or one more year, because I was running for a two-year term to finish it out. So I'm hoping, one of my goals of coming back on the board was to set up a succession plan, and because I really don't wanna do it anymore. If I, I mean, it's not that I don't like it, it's just that I feel like there's good people out there, right? Who, it's their turn, but I just wanna help get, get this board ready, so that I can step away hopefully in a year. But there's so much happening right now in the state, I might, you might convince me to stay a little bit longer. I started working at the Vermont School Boards Association in June of twenty-three, so I'm coming up on two years. So when I'm not here, I'm doing this in a lot of other areas around the state. I work with school boards in their training and development, and I work with new board members. When people are elected, that's why I wanted to know if anybody was newly elected, because we do a program for new board members. And I work with board chairs quite a bit. And so those are, you know, basically anything to do with board education, board services, I do that. Plus, I do some superintendent evaluations as well. And what could I teach you? Well, I could teach you guys, if you're interested in this, in how to cultivate dahlias. I'm a huge dahlia grower, and I have to dig up my tubers every fall and put them away. And in a couple of weeks, I'll be getting them back out.
Just got mine out.
You did it? Oh, good, you and I are like soul sisters. I, are you passionate?
I, I love them, and I'm trying to figure out how to get them to bloom earlier. Because right now, they don't bloom until like right after frost, when I plant them outside. So I'm trying to plant them in pots. I did that last year, but I planted them in pots and then transplanted them, and it.
It didn't work.
It didn't work. So I've got pots that I'm gonna leave them in and just bring the pots outside, see if they're gonna bloom earlier.
Really good idea. Yeah, our, our growing season here is so short in Vermont.
I love them.
I do too. They're so worth the effort, but, really, they drive me crazy.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we just, we're up against winter and frost. So by the time they're like gorgeous, and you've got hundreds of them, all of a sudden, they get frostbitten and die, so.
So I'm trying pots.
Okay, let me know how that goes, because I'd love to, I'd love to do that. So, our training goals for today are two, basically, and these are ones that Troy and I came up with together. What I hope to do with you all today is to gain some clarity around the roles and responsibilities in the context of educational governance. And also raise the awareness, or hope to understand what some of the characteristics of effective school board are, and how effective school boards positively impact students and student achievement. I put a little asterisk next to that, because we may not get to that today. But we will at some point, and I also wanted to let you know that if you can't wait, if you're dying to know how this works, how the behaviors of a school board can positively or negatively impact student achievement, we're having a webinar on that very topic on Thursday this week at noon, a lunchtime webinar. Have you ever participated in those? Yeah, so you know they're live, and you know if you can't make it live, that's fine. As long as you register for them, you'll get that recording sent automatically. So it's good just to register for them, even if you can't attend, because you'll get that automatic link to the recording, plus all the handouts and the presentation. So, so that is what I hope will really focus on, number one, the clarity around roles and responsibilities. I think we can go to the next slide, unless there's any questions about the goals. So I'd like to start off a little bit with session guidelines. Some boards have board protocols. I don't know if your board has protocols, but it's basically kind of how you do your, how you behave when you are in a board meeting around the board table. And if you don't have board protocols, that's totally fine, we can talk about that at a future date. I do, actually, tomorrow's weekly update, my governance tip, will speak to the importance of having board protocols. And if you don't have them, how you can create them. And there's actually model protocols on our website that you can check out, and there'll be a link to those tomorrow. But these are more just guidelines for us, for our purposes, when we're learning together as a team. So I always ask people to listen with an open mind, and to take space, but also to make space. And I like this one, because I, I like when people participate, and there's some people who just jump right in and wanna participate all, like, immediately. And then there's others who need like a moment to kind of reflect and think about what the question and what they wanna say. I'm definitely more of that latter. So sometimes the more enthusiastic people can push out the ones that are, need a little bit more time to reflect and figure out what they wanna say. So that takes spaces, yes, we want everybody to participate, but also just check yourself to see if you might give somebody else a chance to kind of catch up, let their brain catch up. And before you say something, being fully present is obvious, but you guys are, unless there's, you know, I just ask people to, we're here for such a short time. If we can be focused and present and not distracted by cell phones, that's always the best. And I promise we'll get done by eight, even though we started late, because what I can do is just push off what we don't get to the next time. Practice, yes, and, this is a good practice for a board. So many times people say, when we have a discussion, you're, I know I do this. Yes. But, right, the but, that always comes out. And, and but's not a bad word, it's a funny word. But. It can be a little off-putting sometimes, right? And so I've noticed in my own discussions with people, even my family, not just at work, that if I say, "Yes, and," and then present my point of view, that somehow kind of makes it go better, you know? I don't know, there's just something about the word but sometimes. So I just like to use the word "yes, and." So you show that you hear the person, you're not necessarily agreeing with them, the "and" is a little less off-putting than the "but." And they just enjoy learning, because so often, I think as adults, we don't get as many opportunities, right, to learn things as we did when we were younger. Believe it or not, it's actually really a privilege to learn and to be taught new things, and we miss it. I, I miss it, so I just ask that you enjoy learning alongside each other. And just if anybody wanted to add any guidelines or suggestions on this? We feel okay with those?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Some of those are good to practice, too, is during a regular board meeting, especially with public comments, right? Some of that can be very helpful. All right, so Troy, let's get started on roles and responsibilities. We'll go to the next slide. So, here's, I just wanna consider these two words separately. We often use them in the same sentence, roles and responsibilities. But let's think about what they actually mean, very, very quickly, we won't spend a lot of time on this. So if you could just take for a minute, not even a minute, thirty seconds, if you wanna use your paper, that's fine. Think about what responsibility means, and how you would define it in your own words. And then think about what a role means, and how you might define that in your own words. And then we'll share out. Anyone wanna volunteer?
I will. So for responsibility, I said kind of taking ownership for the duty, whatever it is that you may be, whatever it may be. And then for rule, I said being part of the decision, and not necessarily being the sole determiner of whatever the decision may be.
So playing a part, being a part of the decision, okay. Anybody else?
Responsibility is what we have to do. Role is how do we make the responsibility, the responsibility.
So the responsibility is something we have to do, right? And then. And then the role is more how we, how we meet that responsibility, okay? How to meet responsibility. And the what and the how.
I'm sorry, Steve. Responsibility is the duty.
Duty.
And for the role, the ability of the mechanism in which to execute the duty.
Say that again, Denise, the mechanism?
Or the ability to execute.
Again, kind of a focus on the how, how we meet our responsibility. Yeah, yeah.
These are all way better than mine. I got stuck in my head and couldn't come up with anything that could have felt responsible for the first one.
This is happening all the time.
I didn't come up with anything for all. I couldn't think about like separating it from the responsibility. I couldn't. Responsibility, I had to do, like, so very much along the lines of.
So must do like a, like a non-negotiable, like when you have a responsibility, you owe it to somebody to do something, right? It's not negotiable.
Well, I was maybe thinking about role or something like a role is kind of something that you, in my opinion, is kind of something that you earn, like a role is something that you do. Like it's, sometimes it's not like handed to you. Like people see you in different roles than what you may see yourself, especially in like conversations and arguments about things. Or like just communicating.
I did not come up with anything good for responsibility. As soon as it's always.
Isn't it crazy when we use these words all the time and we use them together in the same sentence? Roles and responsibilities? What is the role and responsibility of a school board? Like so many times, I think we say it and we don't really stop and think, what is the difference? And why? And there is a difference. So I'm going to offer you some, some, on the next slide, Troy, if you don't mind going to the next one. This is where you may have trouble starting to see words, because if your eyes are like mine, I'd be like, plus I have the camera in front of it, so. But if I was able to, can you read that at all? Okay, okay, good. So yeah, I mean, some of this you guys talked about. The responsibility side versus the state or fact of having a duty. A lot of people use the word duty to deal with something or of having control over something. I don't like the second part of that definition so much, but it's definitely that having to do something, having the duty to deal with something. The second definition I found online was the state or fact of being accountable or to blame for something. Blame is kind of the other side of the coin, being accountable. And so I guess the point is you're responsible, when you are responsible, you're accountable for things that feel right. And also when they don't feel right, right? So it's kind of both sides of the point. So role is more of the function assumed or part played. So somebody said part. You said the part, part of the decision. I focused in on that. So in your case, I can tell just thinking about the board, like making a decision, right? You're part of the decision. You have a role to play as a school director and in the decision-making process, right? And you also have a role to play after the decision is taken. A part that someone or something has in a, in a particular activity or situation kind of makes me think of what you said about how we have different roles. And you earn a role. And I also think that, I think of the word role and I think of leader, you know? Like you assume a role and a play when you act. I mean, you're, that's a role that you're, you're playing. So again, it's, it's, I liked how you started us on that path, Steve, of the responsibility is like, you gotta do it. You have to do it. You assume a responsibility, you're responsible for. You're accountable for it going right and you're accountable for it not going right. The role is the how. How do we meet that responsibility? What is the part or parts that we play in, in meeting our responsibility, whatever that is? So if that's helpful and clear, then we can now move into a discussion about how this pertains to school boards. But before we do that, I just want to see if anybody had anything to add or any questions. So the next slide has two questions. And normally I would take them one at a time, but the way the slides are showing, they're popping up at the same time. So you know what the second question is going to be. So again, a couple, just a minute here to think about what is the board responsible for? And again, keeping the definition of responsibility in mind. It's a have to, a non-negotiable, a duty, something we're accountable for. And then the other side is what is the superintendent or CEO responsible for? And try not to get nitty gritty. Try not to think, well, they're responsible for making sure the bills are paid on time, right? Like try to think of the bigger picture, not roles, but just kind of the big picture at this point. And then we'll go down to the more, we'll drill down a little bit more to the roles.
Me too, because I completely forgot to say what I did for a job.
Because of my jam. He's like, wait, there was one more thing I wanted to say.
You did, yes. You said it's coach soccer. I thought that was your job. You actually, you have another job. That's hilarious.
I was like, wait, that's a job? No, that was why I forgot. So I wrote down the time I've been on the board and the fact that I coached soccer, but now my job. It's like, I'll remember the job.
So what is it?
I worked full time at Dartmouth, Dartmouth, Hitchcock.
Oh, you did? In finance? Oh, good. So that's, that's not too far from here, is it?
No, actually, the day that we went remote for the students, I went remote with my job and haven't gone back. No, they changed our offices to a totally different department and said, you're good full time remote, so.
And you're working in their finance office?
Yep.
So you're good with numbers.
Yeah.
I'm terrible. My telephone, my social media. Horrible block. So what do we have? What are some, some ideas? No right or wrong answers here, just some ideas. What, like when you think about having a duty to deal with something, being accountable for something, what do you think the board's duty is? What do you think the board's responsibility is?
Budget and policy.
Say it again.
Budget and policy.
Budget and policy, okay.
Best interests, best interests of our students. That's my number one priority, which makes all of the rest of it really challenging.
So we're, we're responsible for ensuring that whatever we do is in the best interest of our students. Okay? That's a nice way to kind of get that big picture. Yeah. So you said policy and finance, right? Budget and, right? And then ensuring that our decisions are in the best interest of our students, okay? Any other ideas what the board's responsibility is?
I went very top, top down instead of ensuring that district is run well, but you said that on a slide before.
Yeah.
I couldn't get it out of my head.
I was going to add the same. One of the trainings, because I was being in, you know, coming in midterm and I struggled a lot because I had been to many board meetings, but trying to figure out what my role and responsibility was, was, it was a struggle. It was, it was truly a struggle. And I did, it was a while before I had access to some of the school BSBA stuff.
Yep.
But I did stumble on one of the webinars and one that I opened my computer up when you asked this question, because I have it saved in my little Google note, because it really just hit home for me. And it was boards assure schools are run well. And then the but.
And.
Oh, and, school boards don't run the schools, right? That was the second part of it. But like the first part of it, boards assure schools are run well. That was, it's just always kind of like, try to keep that in really the whole of it, but that first part of it especially.
Other ideas or thoughts?
The overall vision and mission and our priorities. And crosswalking community interests with our student interests. We're elected from the community as their representatives.
Tell me about that word, crosswalking. Crosswalking the interests of the community, but the interests of the students.
Right, to try and like find a way to, to meet the needs of both.
The needs.
Particularly, you know, it always generally comes down to budgeting, right? Where the community, the community needs affordable taxes and the students need, you know, everything that they need in order to succeed. So trying to find and work with administration to get to that happy spot.
It's not easy. Especially these days, it's not easy. And we're at being asked to do more with less and that's tough. And balancing budgets is tough. Coming up with budgets that pass is really hard, because it usually means cutting, which could potentially impact students.
Right.
Yeah. So that balance is really tricky.
Yeah.
I'm going to think, Heather, as our student here, we're trying not to.
I was thinking that the board is also responsible for hearing the public and the students and listening to what they say and taking what, like Denise said, like what their best interests are and bringing them together, figuring out what benefits both equally. Like trying not to make students' lives harder, but also to try to make sure that the public knows that you're doing the right thing.
So the communication part of the board is really important, communicating what you're saying. Because not everybody has the opportunity to be at board meetings and understand what's happening. So it's really important that the board communicates to their community members about the decisions that you're taking and why you're making those decisions. So, yeah, yeah. Because they only have a small piece of the puzzle and you guys have many, one pieces of that, which you, yeah. Anybody else not go? I don't know. If not, we're going to switch over to the CEO and superintendent. And the reason we put CEO up there is some people say that superintendent's not really a CEO. Interestingly enough, in Vermont statute, this superintendent is called the CEO, which is a curious term, I mean, for an educator, but that is, in fact, the role of a superintendent is to act as a chief executive officer of the school district or of the supervisory union. So that's why I use both, because we tend to say superintendent, but legally the term is CEO. So what would you think, we've talked about what boards are responsible for. What do you think the superintendent should be responsible for?
Or at least in the district.
The second part.
It was oversight, yeah.
Yeah.
Following the policy second.
Following policy set by the board, yeah.
Following the vision.
Yeah.
Run the school, act on goals, guiding principles, support students.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would add communication. Listening to prefer as well, right? Like I think that's, that's a big piece. And whether it's, whether it's this superintendent or CEO doing it or making sure that it's happening.
Right. Right. Yeah, no, it's, it's critical for them to do that. So I would, like, my slides have been working. I would have jotted these ideas down on a, on a blank slide, but we're not going to do that. So I just took some notes. So now we're going to talk about, oops, roles. So if we're, if we're fairly sure, and what you said makes a whole lot of sense to me, especially thinking about that one, the one pithy, pithy saying that you pulled up, that, that school boards assure that districts are well-run, but, and they don't run them. And it's really the superintendent that runs them. Let's just keep that in our minds right now. And if that's what's something we agree on, then what would the roles look like of the respective two? What would the role, how? So knowing that we have to assure that the district is well-run, what is, what do we do? How would we do that? So now we're getting to the how. Remember, because the responsibility was the what, now we're doing the how. So what is our roles? What are our roles as board members? And similarly, what are the roles of superintendent? So we can just do this as group, as a group exercise. You don't have to think about this individually, because I don't want to spend too much more time on this. But make space for others if you're like the one who tends to shut out, but just. And I'm not looking at anyone, I promise you, I promise I'm not looking at you, Steve. Because I know you're not the one.
Wrong.
Wrong, that you usually are the one.
I'm glad you didn't speak up.
Well, you're welcome to go first. So what do you think some of the roles are of those two, the board and the superintendent? And I'll write these down.
It's board, it's board to judge, set policy, to run the district.
Yep, set policy.
That's their main function. And to direct the superintendent to who is our only, only employee.
Right, your sole employee is your superintendent.
So that's, that's our role.
Yeah.
And budget, budgetary, financial, financial.
Okay.
Communication.
Communication. Communication outreach. To whom? The board. We're talking about the board, yeah.
Outreach to students, families, you know, the community members in general. Just making sure that they are hearing us and understanding what we do.
So educating our meeting members.
My personal opinion on that is I think it's our role is more to be engaged and listen and hear and try to, you know, go to the community events and, and understand what's happening in the schools, but not so much the communication piece of it. I definitely struggle with that as a volunteer, school board member, right? Or school board director. It's, I, I have a full-time job and on top of being a parent and that communication piece is something I really struggle with. For that as well, you know, my focus is more on engaging and trying to understand what's happening, not the communication piece.
But both are really important.
Right.
I think that communication is should, is more effective when it's two-way. When it's engaging with your community and getting, I, feedback from them. And communicating things that are happening here at the board table, decisions that you're taking, or educating them about what's happening at the state level in terms of legislation. So I think both of those things, receiving information. So I think both of those things, receiving information from your community is really important because we need to know what are their priorities for the district. And then also communicating, um, back to them what's happening. Definitely a two-way street. And sometimes some people are good at one and, and others are better doing the other one. But as long as they're both happening, then I don't think it like matters that you feel really comfortable doing one thing because you have other board members who could be maybe focused on the other way, the other communication. Yeah. Anything else for the board in terms of roles, what we do? You guys are doing really well.
It's okay.
No, I think the, the policy governance is a, is a valid one. You can govern through policy.
Yeah.
And then ensure that the superintendent is following through on the policies.
Yeah.
And if they stray away from the policies, then you have to redirect that to the policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Communication is a good one. If anybody reaches out to me or calls me, I always return a call, return an email, uh, make sure that they feel heard. I don't necessarily have the time to go seeking it, uh, but I am available at different school events and stuff. And people will come up to me and tell me good things and bad things. It's, it's a combination of both. It's not always something's gone wrong. A lot of the time, something has gone right. Thank you. And, and sometimes as a board, if someone's not feeling heard as a community member, we can bring that attention to the superintendent to say, okay, this person needs some help. And it's not up to us to tell them how it's the result or what's going to happen, but saying, this person needs to talk to you.
Informing your superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get to that about communication too. That's good, the chain of communication. Yeah. And when you engage with your community, you don't have, when I say engage with the community, I really mean as a board, you engage with the community. Um, and that, and that's actually, I don't like to use the word better, but I think it's more effective and more helpful if you, if you engage, meaning asking for information from your community as a board, as a whole, as a body. That way there, you're, you're acting as one voice, right? And, and I think that's really important because sometimes if there could be a potential misperception, if you as a board member start asking individuals, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? It can go off the rails a bit because then the first one might think, ooh, I just told Jess that, you know, I think this and therefore she's a board member, she's going to make that happen. And, and so I feel like that engagement piece is more effective and better when you do do it as a board, not as individuals. And we can talk about that as well in our training at some point, like what does community engagement look like? And there's ways to do it that are very effective and impactful. The communication in terms of sharing information definitely, um, see no harm in you communicating individually with people, like if they're just confused or, um, they have a question for sure. But we'll talk again about communication and following this, the chain, because you do want to again, be careful with that. Um, and, and help them educate the community members about the proper chain of command and the chain of, um, authority. So we'll talk about that. CEO, quickly, roles for CEO, like, if we're gonna, if they're, if they have to, if we assure that the board, the district is well-run and they do the running, then what is of this district, what do they do?
I would say oversight, uh, admin and teachers.
Yes.
Kind of making sure everybody's kind of doing what they're supposed to be doing, being healthy and comfortable. And, you know, if they have struggles, then obviously communicating with CEO or superintendent who can then, you know, talk to us as needed or appropriately work through.
Handle those struggles.
Yeah.
I, uh, agree in that way. I agree about the, the response to administrators. But they shouldn't be, superintendent shouldn't be down there with the teachers. The teacher should be going to the administrators and then to the, not directly to the superintendent. But I understand your point and I agree. But I think it's important that there's a chain. And that means teachers go to administrators, not the superintendent. The superintendent shouldn't be going down to teachers and saying, what do you think? Because that's, that's overriding administration. So that's important.
Right.
Different that we, that we have here.
No, that's fine. I totally, I get the chain. I just, yes, they're always going to go around anyway, so.
I didn't want to say that.
Okay.
Who's always going to go around?
It just, well, I mean, in general, so superintendent's position or office is literally in the hallway. So it's not like they can avoid staff and then they're going to
Basically in this building?
Different schools. They're going to see them. So I, my point was I see exactly what he's saying, but also if they're, you know, walking around the schools, they're going to have interaction.
Yeah. Well, and that's natural.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with that.
And they should.
Right, yeah, there's, yeah, yeah. But if there's a problem.
Right.
Then that's where speed is, is right, that we have to be careful, yeah, about following that chain of command.
No, I get that.
Yeah, but honestly, it's just like a board member. Does it, just because we're a board member doesn't mean we can't talk to teachers. No, of course not. We have, we're parents too, many of us. So it, it, it just means that when you're talking about board business, however, then we have to put that board hat on and be very clear what, what that proper chain of command and authority is. Yeah. We're going to talk about that too. All right. That's okay. I wanted to stand up. So we'll take a break after this, I promise, and then we'll move into a couple exercises and then call and let it come out sound. So one way to think about the roles that each of the two play, the board and the CEO or the superintendent, is to think about it in terms of these categories or roles. Governance and management. And again, sometimes we might think that they're one and the same, but they're not. Where is that? The screen? There we go. So in, in order to be an effective and a strong school board, it's really important to understand what our government's role is all about. What does it mean? And how is it different from management? So hopefully you know by now, and I feel like you do, that, um, that a board governs the district while the CEO or superintendent manages it. And so let's just take a look at these terms, govern versus manage. So govern, governance is actually a Greek word. Its origins come from the Greek language and it means steer. Steering. So in the context of school governance, it means steering a district towards its vision. We talked about that, right? Um, looking down the road into the future, seeing what's coming ahead of us is very much the board's role. That's what governance is. It's steering our district, making sure that we have a vision for our school district and we are helping to ensure that the district is moving towards that vision. Management on the other side, on the other side, is very much, it's actually a Latin word. It means hand. Like, I don't know if you study Spanish or French, but le man, or mano in Spanish. It's, it's handling things. It's how you handle things. And that's more of the operations side of the operation. So that has everything to do with the superintendent and running the, the whole district. So we are responsible for helping to govern it, the district, and the superintendent is responsible for making sure that it's well-run, it's well-managed. So the roles are different, but they're interdependent. We have to have boards govern because we need to help tell our superintendents where we want to see the district going. Right? So when there's clarity and understanding around this difference, the different roles, governance and management and who does what, then the whole organization works better together. And it really does help a district to stay on track and stay the course. It's when those roles start to get muddied and confused and when a board starts to mess around with the management, that things get a little off the rails. And I always say, you have a wonderful superintendent, you will eventually soon, hopefully here, who you're going to pay a really good salary to manage your school district. So let them do their job. If you don't govern, if we don't govern, then nobody's going to govern. Like who's paying? If we don't pay attention to that long-term picture and, um, what's coming, then nobody will. And so that's really important that we not ignore that role. So let me give you another kind of silly little example of what I mean. So on the next slide, again, I gave you the, that they're supposed to come up once at a, one at a time. So how many school board members does it take to screw in a light bulb?
None, superintendent.
Exactly. So it's really not the school board's role to screw in a light bulb. It's up to the board to say, we need lights. Let there be lights. Um, and, um, we need to be able to see. No, no, no pun intended, right? Um, so it's kind of a silly example, screwing on a light bulb. But again, it articulates the responsibility of the board to articulate the why. Why do we exist? Why does the Springfield School District exist? Why do we need light? And how do we know the answer to this question? Well, it goes back to that community engagement part, right? It's our community that gives us that information. Why does our district exist? What does it want to see our district do? And, um, once we have that vision in place, the one that the board helped to create with input from your community, then the board steps back. And then lets the superintendent figure out how to implement that vision and how to move the district towards the vision. And the vision that we've set for the district is we want there to be light superintendent. And the superintendent says, okay, great. I will figure out how to provide that light. Will we have, and I think you can go to the next slide, what kind of light bulb do we, are we going to need? Will it be solar candle, neon, LED, right? So they decide how they're going to light up the district. But then do they do all that work by themselves? Of course not. They can't. They're one person, 24 hours in the day. So they have their admin team, their direct reports. Um, and they delegate down and they have staff do the work of screwing in the light bulb. And then of course the admin team delegates down to teachers and other staff in the building. So it's, it's a kind of a silly little example using the light bulb, but I always feel like it kind of makes sense to people when you kind of just make it that simple. Um, because it's a, it's, um, it's just important to understand that we as a board are really focused on that why. And if we don't focus on the why, then nobody will, or maybe we'll have the wrong why. And really we want the why to come from our community members, what they want to see. Does that make sense? Yeah. I mean, based on what you, you came up with, I know you get it. Like I can tell when we talked about what is the role? What is responsibility of the two? You were, you were definitely understanding and what, um, and just that one sentence of the school board assuring that the schools are well-run, but don't run them, I just think is really helpful to keep in mind. So next slide. So the role of a district school board is to really act as a, so what, what do we do next? So once, once, um, once we have this amazing vision that the community has given their input to, and we've instructed this superintendent, okay, now you figure out how we're going to achieve this vision. Are we done? Do we just sit back and watch and what, what happens next? No, we have more responsibilities, right? And what are some of those responsibilities? We have to provide oversight. And we have to make sure that three things happen. That, that a high-quality education is given to every student in the district. So we set the vision, the expectations and the goals to assure that every student in the district gets a high-end quality education. And then equally important, this is where we get into the balancing act and sometimes the rub, right? Between taxpayers and students. We want to make sure that our taxpayers are getting a good return on their investments. And the third thing is we want to make sure that we enable the system to operate efficiently, effectively and ethically. Now, the word trustee, I just want to focus on for a minute. It's worth talking about because here in, in Vermont, we serve as trustees on behalf of our school district. And that's a little bit different from being a representative. Because when we think about representatives like that are elected to our legislature, for example, in Montclair or in Washington, they have a little bit different responsibility than what we have as school board members. So a trustee is someone who does actually have fiduciary responsibility um, to act in the best interest of the organization that we, that we serve. And that's again, the school district. And trustees are often appointed or elected, in our case, were elected to oversee the overall direction of the organization, which again, in our case, is the school district. Trustees are expected to make decisions that align with the mission and the goals of the institution. And we consider the long-term sustainability and wellbeing of the organization. And trustees are accountable for the outcomes of their decisions. So being a trustee is a little bit different from being a representative, someone who is also elected, right? But typically a representative serves as a voice for a particular group, the group that elected them, a group of constituents. Representatives will often advocate for those interests of those that elected them. Um, they'll advocate for their concerns and perspectives of their constituents in the decision-making process. And representatives are typically, um, not entrusted with fiduciary responsibilities. So we really are acting less as a representative of our, of the people that elect us. We're acting more as a trustee of the district who've been entrusted to do what's best for the district. And yes, it's important that we think about our taxpayers and we think about our community that we serve. Sometimes it's not always in the best interest of the students. And so that's where it gets really complicated and potentially messy. And that's why we're having such a hard time right now with passing budgets. And, and it's, it's the school district, I mean, you guys are, how many towns do you have? Just one. See for, uh, you guys, it's not a big of a deal because you're from Springfield. And in, in my school district, we have two towns and then we're part of a larger supervisory union. And so I'm very cognizant of, when I introduce myself, I say, I'm Debbie Stengizer. I'm a school board member of the Barstow Union Biden School District. I don't say, I'm the Chindon representative too. Because I'm not just representing the citizens of my town. I'm, and I'm not representing the citizens of Mendon. I'm I'm, and I'm not representing the citizens of Mendon, I'm representing the interests of our, of our district. And yes, those voters put me in office and yes, those voters could take me out of office if they don't agree with what I'm saying or doing. That's totally within their prerogative. But I'm there to serve on behalf of the school district as entrusted by the voters. And so I think we sometimes get into trouble when we say we represent. A group or a town and because that's not really the way school boards are supposed to operate. It's easier in a district like to Springfield, where you're one city.
Yeah, but I think it's also, I mean. I know even before, like I joined the board as well. You know, we elected the school board and they should be representing. Our interests and, and all of that and. Yes, but, yes, and.
Yes, and, and.
The school, I mean, really, so when it comes down to them being in conflict. We as school board trustees need to act in the best interest of the school district when they're in conflict. It puts a different spin on it.
Yeah. You'll be able to watch this video so that they understand that too. Yeah, and it's, it's not easy. Uh, um, it's. And people. But it makes sense because you guys are um privileged to a lot more information than the average person in Springfield, right?
Right.
So, and you're doing what you think is best with the information you're getting, you're making informed decisions, not every. People who are disagreeing with you or who think that things should be done differently, they haven't been privy to all the information that you've been privy to. And that's um, that's why they entrust you because they don't want to do it. So. There's some education there that has to happen of, of the voters that you entrusted us to do this job. And we're doing the best we can, given all this information we're being collected. And so it goes back to communication too, I think. That it's really important you communicate. To your community so much about why you're doing the things you're doing, why the decisions are that you're taking. Like the budget is such an obvious example, but why did you make these decisions about the budgets? Why did you decide it was really important that you keep that extra interventionist? You know, because of things that have happened. And we know that it's in the best interest of our kids to catch up after COVID or, you know, like that's all part of the. Job, the school board member. And if this, then if your voters are coming back and saying, yeah, but I still can't afford this. And then that's, that's where it gets really tricky and hard because. We're all taxpayers and we know how hard these bills are to pay. We can't fix that. So I will frequently tell voters, well, then talk to your representatives and talk to people in Montclair to change it. Because obviously the way we're funding schools is not sustainable, it's not working. And that's what they're doing now. That's what the conversation's all about, is fixing the financial funding system. Hopefully it'll be better. That's another day's conversation. Um, so if, if that's clear, I mean clearer, it may still take some time to noodle over this, I mean, it doesn't come, come easily. So what is it that we actually do? So we've talked about our roles. So the way um, the Vermont School Boards Association has um organized the different functions or roles of school board. Is by putting into these six different kind of buckets or categories. So um, I'm not going to go into any kind of detail at all, except to, to read them to you. And then um. Let you know that um. I'm, I'm happy to come back and dig into any of them with you and go much deeper. So. One of our essential roles is to engage the community and establish a vision. We've kind of talked about that already. That's the engagement part where we really need to solicit input from our community. And help use that input to establish a vision for the district. We adopt policy, that came up many times here. We are responsible for adopting policy and then once it's adopted, monitoring it to make sure that it's being implemented. Um, we are also responsible. For ensuring that we have a healthy board and superintendent partnership. Well, I guess you could argue that it's. That's also the responsibility of our superintendent, right? Because it takes two to have a good relationship. But again, trying to cultivate that partnership. Um, with our superintendent and work in partnership with that person um is really, really important. Developing a budget and assuring financial oversight. So we've talked about that before. Um, and then monitored progress. How are we doing in the district? Are we moving towards that vision? Um, if we're not, why? What's getting in our way? Or we think we're moving towards the vision, but we see some trouble down the road ahead of us. So we have to be aware of that, like we have no shortage of examples these days of what's coming. Um, and then effective and ethical operation. So making sure that our district is running effectively. And that we're not breaking any laws and we're being as ethical as possible. And that has a lot to do with the way you guys run your board meetings, um, and the way we behave outside of the boardroom. Um, so behind each of those six categories of roles, there's a lot more. Um, if you have a copy of this, Essential Work with School Boards, I don't know if any of you still have your copies. We send these out when you're elected. So if you were elected a long time ago, you probably don't have a copy. Um, do you have any, Troy?
Yeah.
No? Do you guys want a copy?
I don't know. I could have one.
I could have one, I don't.
I'm happy to, to leave. I have one, two.
I think you should have one.
I think you should too.
That would be nice, if the coaches, chairman.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you should have one. Yeah, you have one. Way to go. Denise, you probably got one.
I was just looking at my bag and I'm like, it's not in there, but.
Well, I must. I will leave you guys as many copies as I have. I have one, two, three, four. That might be it. Hang on, I have one more in here.
I think that's because you said you have your.
Denise, you want one? Yeah, so if you want to, like, if you're curious to learn more about what's behind each of these, it's all in here. It's also on our website. We have an Essential Worker Vermont School Boards Toolkit. Which has actually some um different tools that you can use for um. Evaluating how you're doing in each of these areas. So um. Uh, there's that as well. And then this next slide just shows the cyclical nature of our work. That it never really ends, that we're constantly doing these six different roles. We're engaging with our community, creating a vision. We're employing the superintendent. It goes around and around and around. There's no end, there's no beginning. Um, and then in the middle, we negotiate contracts that are aligned with student needs, vision and community expectations. Um, so that is our responsibility to negotiate contracts. Um, and ideally, we want to ensure that those contracts. We're hiring people who um, whose own visions and values are aligned with the districts, right? So. And what the community expects. So that's really brief. Um. This is an analogy I often will use when teaching new board members is I say, think of it as. Our roles as school board is we're standing on the balcony. It's a view from the balcony. We're overlooking the scene below. And from our vantage point, you can see the entire landscape. In front of us. Um, we can see the horizon out in the distance. We're not focused and we probably can't even see the individual elements down below. That's what the superintendent sees. Um, so by being able to stay on the balcony and not go down, we're able to. We're able to see that bigger picture, the vision, the mission. The challenges that are facing the school district. Um, and we're always making our decisions based on those things. Um. We look at the future out in the distance. That's our job is to focus on the distance, not just what's happening today, tomorrow, or even next year. We're looking at two, five, 10 years down the road. What's coming in terms of education? What does education in the 21st century look like? What does our workforce demands look like? That's really important. Are we preparing our students so that they're ready to go out into the workforce? Um. The demographics of our community, that's another thing we have to be aware of. Are we shrinking? Are we growing? What kind of people are moving into our community? Um, how do we meet their students' needs? Um. And then of course, keeping track of what's happening at the government level, I think is really important. That's part of our role as well, to see what kind of legislation is being proposed. And is that going to benefit our, our districts and help us move us towards our vision or, or not? So um. Oftentimes you might hear, the board has to stay the 30,000-foot view. That's another thing that some um. Governance experts will talk about is you really need to kind of stay up here and not down here. And then the last analogy I'll throw at you on the next slide is seeing the forest through the trees. Again, that bigger picture, not getting too consumed by the individual trees, but seeing the whole forest for what it is. So that's really all I wanted to train on. Well, one more slide, I promise, one more slide. Because I did want to touch on authority, uh, authority, accountability and communication. I love this diagram. It's something that I don't, it came from a. My board's a policy governance board and so we did a lot of policy governance training back in 2014. Um, and I don't know if that, this picture came from that training, but I, I've always kept it. Um, and, and I keep it in my mind a lot because. The, the ownership is basically your community. It's a term that we use in policy governance. It's those that own the school district or those that own the organization. So you could say the taxpayers, right? Because they're paying for taxes. They're paying to, um. They're helping to pay for the district. So they are at the top. And they elect us the board. So they're giving authority to us, the board, remembering trusting us with. A responsibility to assure that schools are well-run. And then that point is what I find so clever. Because as you said, Steve, our one sole employee is CEO and superintendent. There are one direct report. So from the board to the CEO, there's just that one narrow point. And then from the CEO or superintendent, it goes down to the staff. And then from the staff down to the students. So that's how the authority works in, in um. In school districts and then the accountability just works in the opposite direction. So the staff is accountable to the superintendent. But within staff, obviously we have hierarchy too, right? Like we're talking before, the teachers and the principals. Um, even in the central office, you have directors that have staff beneath them. So there's little miniature hierarchies inside the staff part of that diagram. Within the staff. Um, certain staff will report to the CEO, again, the directors. Um, and the principals, anybody who's on the admin team. Well, um, is accountable to the CEO. And then the CEO through that point, again, is accountable to the board. And then ultimately, the board is accountable to the taxpayers and those who elect us to put us here. And so that's the way communications should work too. So if you start to get a little bit confused in your head of like, how does this communicate, like? How does this work? Just think about this chain of authority and accountability because I think it mirrors very closely how the communication should work. We have 10 minutes left. So I have two things. We can do a couple scenarios. Before we go to apply some of our learning and then we'll call it a night. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys have done really well. Um. It's not touchy-feely, I promise. Okay, turn that. I gotta think about which one to do. I have so many. Um, and I think one would be better to do once you have um here, here. So I'm, I'm gonna skip that one. So let's just go into a couple slides ahead. So this is called, go back just one, if you don't mind. Uh, back to the three ones. So this is um, something called, it's just an exercise to practice. We're gonna give you, I'm gonna give you some scenarios and you're gonna say. You're gonna read the scenario and I can read them out loud if you can't see it. Is what the board doing part of our oversight role? Or are we overstepping? Or is what you're reading? Maybe just not a great idea because sometimes there's that gray area, right? Like it's not, it's allow, it's, it's not overstepping, it's not oversight, but it's maybe just not the best idea, okay? So I always like that other option. It makes me feel better when it's, there's that. Option. So. Um, so overseeing something is something that we do within our oversight responsibility. Overstepping is when we go outside of our lane, outside of our bounds. Um. Outside of our governance lane and we kind of verge into the management lane. And then maybe neither is just not a good idea. So let's do the first one. At a regular meeting. The board is discussing the first draft of the next fiscal year's budget that the superintendent just presented. A board member asked, why is there no mention of district goals as outlined in the current five-year strategic plan? And they want to know how this draft budget supports the district goals. Do you think that this board member is? Overseen into playing their oversight responsibility or are they overstepping? They shouldn't be asking the superintendent that type of question? Or maybe just it's not the best idea to do that?
I know.
I think that's spot on.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Oversight. Yeah. And why do you think it's oversight?
Because there's a strategic plan.
Right.
So our strategic plan, our old one based in 2019 was based on five pillars. It used to be that they would come with, this is how it relates to lower one, two, three, five. And that's how we would know that it was aligned to strategic.
Perfect. That's how your budget was presented?
True.
Not this year.
Oh, not this year.
We haven't touched back to that enough.
But ideally, that's what you want to see, right?
Yep.
Is, is how this each. Part of the strategic, wait, how the budget aligns with one of the five pillars of your strategic plan.
Yeah, but it's not entirely clear to say that it wasn't part of the budget process because us continuing to do pre-K. And the, the board is part of pillar one for us in our strategic.
I just mean it wasn't necessarily tied back to it.
Yeah.
It wasn't.
It was sometimes a conversation.
Yes. It wasn't like directly, like it wasn't um. Tangibly tied back in a way that somebody wasn't involved with those pillars. Be able to really grasp.
Okay, okay. Right, got it. Got it. Well, and, and I mean. So the board, the board's role in terms of the district goals. Is really one of financial support and, and, and ensuring that there's adequate financial resources. To help achieve that goal, whatever, or the goals or the five pillars of the strategic plan. So that is definitely within your purview to say, hey, wait a minute here, I'm not seeing the direct connection between. What you're proposing in this budget and what um, we want to do as a district. So that's completely within. Your role. So that's, that was good, that was easy. That was an easy one. The next one may not be so easy. Well, this one actually is pretty easy. You guys are probably way ahead of this. A parent. Approaches a board member in the store to tell them how much trouble their child is having with the PE teacher. The issue is related to the child never being called on by the PE teacher to be a team captain. The parent asks the board member to do something. The board member says, don't worry, they will contact the principal first thing Monday morning. Overstep, oversight.
Overstep.
Totally overstepping. Why? Because that's not the chain.
The chain says the parent has to, or the teacher first.
Teacher first.
And then the principal.
Right. Right.
You missed the superintendent.
And then the.
I keep forgetting.
You forget about that person, that very significant person. You forget about that person, that very significant person. Yeah, no, it's a mistake that many rookie school board members make. I know I made it my first year. I didn't understand this whole thing. So it's not uncommon. I think it's part of our role, it's part of our job as school board members, is to help educate our community members about that chain of command and that chain of communication. And so, there's really great ways to do that, where you could, you know, you wouldn't be like, "Sorry, you didn't talk to the teacher, so I can't talk to you." I mean, you would definitely listen empathetically and say, "I'm so sorry that your child is having these problems with the PE teacher. It sounds really difficult. Have you had a chance to talk to the PE teacher?" And then you go from there. And if they say no, then that's where you would say, advise them to do is take it up with the PE teacher. If they say, "Yeah, the PE teacher was not very understanding, and my child still never gets calls to be team captain," then you could say, "Well, gosh, then maybe you might want to have a conversation with the principal." And then it could help them understand how the whole system works, because they may not understand, especially if you have a personal relationship with a community member. Or, you know, that often they'll come to you and say, "Hey, let me tell you this." And they know, sometimes they know what they're doing, sometimes they don't. So that one was really easy. Let's do two more. Let's do the next one. A well-intentioned, enthusiastic new board member wants to be available to staff and parents to answer questions and solve problems in the district. She posts on her Facebook account that she welcomes people to reach out when an issue arises, and includes her cellphone number in the post.
Not a great idea.
Why is that a terrible idea? Where do we begin?
She starts bad enough.
One of the roles of board members to be one voice, and to work, like, this is something that we're acting together.
Yeah.
On the direction of, and if there's issues that arise, it's something that probably, one, needs to go through the right channels.
Right.
And two, something that potentially the whole board should be aware of, not just one.
Exactly. Exactly. It violates that whole board principle completely. Yeah, because you speak with one voice, and so you can't be the one that's out there fixing people's problems. I mean, sometimes we want to, and we feel badly that that's not our job, but our job is really to direct them to the right place to get, to get the help that they're seeking. So yeah, we really need to respect that whole board authority, and individual board members, we don't have any authority outside of the boardroom. This is, there's one voice here, and even after you take a vote, and if you are on the side that didn't win the vote, when you leave the boardroom, even if you disagreed with the vote, you still are expected to speak as a, as a, as a, as one, and to say, "Didn't really agree with the way it went down, but I'm going to support the board." And that's not always easy to do, but.
You just went through that.
You did.
Yeah.
What can be an example, without naming names, if you can?
I mean, I don't share. We had, we just went through the great shift within our district, and it was, it was not a unanimous vote. I voted for it to happen a year later, and the majority voted for it to happen this year.
Okay.
So it's happening this year, and that was where it was. And I think it's come up a couple times where I said, you know, I didn't vote, while I didn't vote with the majority of the board, it is what we're doing, and we need to support this as a district and problem.
People got the misconception, I voted for it the same way she did, that we were against it. We weren't against it, we just wanted more time.
Right.
And then when we had a second vote, it's everybody voted for it. But it was that misconception that we were against it, because we voted no, and that wasn't the case.
Wasn't the case.
Get communications.
Yep. Communicating why you had concerns about it, yeah. But that once the vote was taken, you were supporting the whole board. Perfect. You guys did that really well.
Have a good share.
Have a good share. That's a good example.
You buy a good one?
He makes heroin. He makes heroin.
Yeah, he makes heroin. Yeah, and Facebook is its own beast that we could talk about. I mean, I could do a whole training on board communications, and that can be very tricky, social media. In fact, just go to two more slides, and that'll be our last one. This one, yeah. This one I find interesting. A proud board member posted on Facebook, on his Facebook account, when the local high school basketball team won the state championship game. He posted a photo of the team and congratulated them on a job well done.
Maybe we'll break this rule, so.
Yes.
I'm intrigued to see what the writing service, because we do, we all are very excited and happy in every aspect of our district, so.
Are you posting on your personal Facebook accounts when somebody wins?
Yeah, we have a team. We have a school, District One. We have our individual schools. We have our booster.
We like.
We like that, yeah.
You don't post.
I like the picture, but I don't post it.
Okay, that's fair. So your district is putting the posts out.
But with parents that have kids on it, that's what I understand. I'd probably be the same.
Yeah.
I'd probably be the same, like, those pictures.
But in my pre-existing role on the booster club, I post. But I post, when I post, I'm on the booster club.
Is it a booster club?
It's the booster club.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things, there's no legal or ethical issue here. I mean, it's, you have every right as a board member, even if you don't have a child on your basketball team, to be proud of that team. And so, it, you know, if you're a frequent Facebook user, and you're really excited that your team just won the state championship, you might just innocently post a picture and say, "Look at, way to go Springfield, congratulations." The reason it may not be the best idea is because if we're going to celebrate the accomplishments of the basketball team, then what happens, like, if your chess club wins, and nobody posts about the chess club? You know, I mean, it just becomes this, and whether you're doing it as me, as a personal private assistant, I'm so excited for my team, that's awesome, that people still see you as a board member. And so, you just have to be aware of that, that even though you're of every right to express your happiness, your joy, your pride, it's, you're still a board member, so let the district post, "Congratulations to the boys and the girls' basketball team." That's my best advice, and try not to put that stuff on your personal accounts. So freedom of speech, and yeah, you could argue that, and say, "Well, you're right, you have every right to put that if you want to," but just be aware there's sometimes natural consequences. All right, so it's eight o'clock. Anybody want to say anything else before we back Let me quickly get to the end of the slide presentation. You have to go through about a dozen. We didn't talk about the governance standards, but we can do that next time. Oh, just quickly, if you don't mind, just to close us out. I don't like just saying bye. This is missing video, I'm leaving, but just answer one of those questions, if you don't mind. "What are you committed to do to maintain role clarity in the Springfield School District?" Or, "What do you need from the rest of the board team to help you..."
Role clarity.
Do you need anything from the rest of the board, though, Steve, to help you stay in your lane, or no? You feel like you've got it?
I think myself, I think that the board states it.
Mine is so much in the board, but I think one thing I would look forward to developing with the board is, and Peter, is how we can better engage and communicate with the community. I think that's one struggle.
Effectively, right?
Yeah.
I know it's just getting information out there in a way that the community can receive, wants to receive.
I'm really excited for the board to build the board's relationship with Peter, because I think that's essential for us, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And that, that relationship needs to be rock solid for us to move toward it more
Excited to learn some of his experience, his tenure as a superintendent, things that he has been through, and offer us inside out.
I'm excited for you guys. I am. Anything suggested, anything that you commit, you're committed to do to maintain this role clarity, now that we pieced it apart, straightened our heads? How will we maintain it?
For me, I have struggled. The last year was rough for me, and I feel like I take the negativity and the attacks really hard, like, right to the core. And so, it's been hard. I feel like I've lost friends over this board, and I can't, it's hard for me to separate it sometimes. So for me, this next year needs to be better, just in general. And I don't know if that's like a board piece of it, or if it's just a personal piece of it, that I need to be able to detach from the negative and find the positive in the district, because I need to obviously stay out of social media, because there's nothing going on there. And just be able to do what I got on the board to do, and that's focused on, you know, the well-being of our kids and, you know, the district, and do everything I can to make that happen, and we hope that happens. And that's where I'm struggling, and I haven't publically talked there yet. And I know it's not going to happen overnight, but at the same time, it's definitely frustrating in the years. So that's going to be extremely personal in this meeting, eight o'clock at night.
That was very helpful to hear.
I've been on the board ten years, and it hasn't raised some penalties up, because I'm cracking some buttons. I think I'm looking forward to Peter coming in here, to regenerate that negativity that we've got. We did a lot of work to re-bridge that at different times. But I understand this, you've been on it a couple years, but I can understand totally what you're saying, because I felt that way when I first started with negative. I think Peter is going to bring us, there's light in the dark, that's probably the best.
I mean, that was, he made a really, really big decision this year, and it had a lot of big feelings. That resulted, I mean, like, I would have been a giant target in this, but, you know, it's, and I think social media did abrupt into this big fall of negativity. There's so much good going on, and I, you know, getting back on track, and focusing more on the good, and, you know, working with Peter to revise our strategic plan and our vision, because it's old, and could use some polishing, and, you know, where are we going to go in the next five, 10 years? In a really uncertain overall time for public education, as well as, you know, what are our community needs? They've definitely changed over the years from, you know, back when the shops were open, to what they're in there now.
I was gonna kind of circle back to that, too, as far as revisiting, refreshing our vision, the five pillars, and kind of bringing us back to that core of it. I think at the heart of the board, that is the direction, but we've lost that connection with it, and how do we get that to them? And more refreshing.
So what I'm hearing is what you need from this board is support, just the whole board principle, I think, is really important when you're making these difficult decisions. And maybe, I don't know what you're asking, Jess, but I'm thinking when you're talking about how difficult it is for you personally, I get that, but you're one of a whole. So, like, even, I don't know what this looks like in practice, but just knowing that, that you're a whole board, and you're all doing this together as one, hopefully offers you some comfort. And, because that is tough. It's tough to make really hard decisions and have your community mad at you for those decisions. And, yeah, and I feel like, as long as you guys together are working well, and you're acting, and it seems like you are, from what I'm hearing, then that's going to help you, whether the bad parts, the difficult parts.
I think you hit it earlier, trustee. That's how I ever heard that term, the whole years I've been on the board, never heard that term.
Really?
And I think that makes a big difference, where trustees, not representatives.
It's a whole different spin.
It's a whole spin that I've never thought about before. And I think that's, I'm taking that away tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Where trustee versus representative.
A group of constituencies.
That makes a big, that makes a big difference, smarter decisions. You may want, I mean, we listened to that gentleman tonight, said his piece, but we're trustees or not, because you voted me in, doesn't mean I have to go with your thought for, I don't have to go with your thought, depends, you know?
Yeah.
But as a trustee, it's a whole new spin on, spin on from there.
Yes.
The old guy, you're going to learn something.
You have a tool to learn, and with school board learning, you never stop learning. I just, you really don't. And that, that's a tough decision we're facing as boards, is we're being entrusted to deal with that issue that he raised earlier. We have to do what's best for our districts, and we're really, what, that's going to be a challenge for all of us, especially if we don't have a state behind us telling us or supporting. If we're not going to have a unified state position as individual districts, this is going to be really tough.
Yeah. And it's taken, it's taken like an apolitical board, like a school board.
Yeah.
In thrusting us into a political.
Arena.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is like, ugh.
Not what we want to be.
It's really uncomfortable for me personally. But I'm just thinking, you know, using the trustee lens, and, you know, where is my ultimate responsibility? I think will aid in decision-making like that.
I hope so. Thank you all for your help and for your participation tonight. That was great. And if you could take a screenshot, just take a picture of the QR code to do an evaluation, if you don't mind. We don't have to do it tonight, but if you could just, it's the next one, right there. We do do evaluation, we do take your feedback very seriously. Yeah, and you could send it to others for it, that'd be great. Yeah, and you could send it to others for it, that'd be great.
Next, we're gonna teach you how to log into me.
I heard yours be squealed too, so I don't feel bad.
Who didn't, who didn't notice login?
They bust my traps all the time because I forget the interface button.
Oh, right.
And that noise, and today what happened, damn. And it started vibrating, damn, damn, damn.
I was walking up to the nearest one.
Really?
I heard all the down ones.
Oh, yeah.
I think they wait at one minute when I log on.
Yeah, red button.
Please, please send one of those work hours years ago. I used to rap after she would do it every time she logged on. So when I do it.
Zion's trying to know it.
That's hilarious.
Yeah, I need.
I'm sure people have heard worse than that, Steve.
I know.
That actually wasn't so bad.
Oh, it wasn't?
So I can send you right?
I know, I'm like, oh, very.
Um, I did it, so we didn't. Oh, Troy, did we just gotten in? Are we recording?
Yeah. Yeah, we're still recording.
There's just an update about the whole thing in our email.
It came through just before this meeting.
Is there another one, or one, the one that came through?
One came through two hours ago. So it says that Vermont will send a single statewide letter which will certify Vermont's compliance with applicable current law and reject conditions or assurances that are not supported by current law. Given the statewide response, superintendents will not be asked to provide individual certifications.
I had a discussion with Debbie, I had discussions with Debbie today, she was here. Yeah, we had discussions about it. It's gonna be recorded. I'm talking about recorded.